I will guarantee you is a world record for somebody who turned in parking tickets when I was the council. He would turn in five to 10 a week.
Good morning. Hate to interrupt conversations. Welcome to the commission meeting of December 17th. I'll call the meeting to order and note that we have a quorum present. Commissioner Karski is absent. Before we get started, I'd like you to turn off your cell phones as I'm hearing it in my ears right now. And also to sign in the back of the room on the signature page. And then if you would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to item number one. Now we consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, that would help. Consider a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on a consent agenda, all familiar faces, it doesn't look like it. Any requests from the commission to remove anything from the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number two, we've got already taken care of, so we'll go. You've got too much paper here. You think I'm going to read all your instructions? Go on to the regular business. This is a public hearing to consider supplement budget requests to the 2024 annual budget. Susan Beeman, welcome.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. Today, we are asking your approval of a resolution to authorize supplements to the 2024 budget. I won't go through these in detail by everything that's in here. I'll just give highlights by fund. So the request is to supplement the general fund for $278,108 for expenses related to courts, the sheriff's office, coroner, airport, and humane society. A supplement for E-911 fund of $550,000, emergency management fund of $213,485, domestic abuse fund of $4,043, and capital projects fund of $38,567. There are detailed memos within your packet that explain those requests in detail. I can certainly go through them and each of them in more detail if you'd like, or I can just take questions, whatever your preference is.
Before we go to the commission, is there anybody that has questions from the audience? Commission questions or comments?
A question?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'll just ask a general question of just how does this compare in your experience to prior years? Most of these seem relatively small and non-controversial or pass-throughs, so nothing that's jumping out at me, but just anything you would highlight?
No, there's really nothing overly abnormal. The two that are maybe a little bit more unique are the E-911 fund. As we've kind of briefed earlier this year, that supplement is due to the pastor that we give to the metro. That's part of the city of Sioux Falls. The state legislature approved a $1 per line increase. So now that we're getting more revenue and we're passing more over to metro, so that's what's causing that. And then additionally, emergency management fund, that $213,485 is related to leases that were executed earlier this year that were approved by the commission. And that is related to GASB accounting lease standards to book capital outlay for those leases as well as lease proceeds. And that's truly just an accounting transaction to maintain compliance with GASB.
Commissioner Bender?
As long as we're talking about outliers a little bit, too. I just would note that the courts has a pretty significant supplement. I really appreciated the extensive memo that the courts provided, kind of breaking down where all those costs were, which was pretty much across the board. And, you know, we had a long history when I've been on the commission of having budget supplements for the courts. And then we kind of turned the ship and we were doing pretty well for a couple of years. And now the costs are once again kind of outrunning what the budget was at.
Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have two seconds. Roll call, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item number 10 is to consider a motion to authorize a 2024 budget supplement request using grants, donations, and reimbursements. Again, Susan Beeman.
So our request today is for you to approve grant donation reimbursement supplements identified in budgets totaling $12,246,169.97. The totals by fund of these supplement requests are general fund, $1,157,861.71, pastor grant fund of $132,243, JAG grant fund of $24,673.17, emergency management fund of $194,355.09, and American Rescue Plan Grant Act Fund of $10,737,037. There are, again, detailed information in your packet on these. I can certainly go into more detail. Obviously, as part of this, you'll see the ARPA fund of $10 million is the largest of these. This will be the large, the last large one. We might, we'll have some dollars expended next year to finish the closeout of contracts and such, but it'll be very small in comparison to where we are at right now.
Any public comment? Commissioner comments? Just have one again. Your statistical information and keeping all these records and all the responsibility you had has been an amazing process. Well, thank you. No motion? We have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? No, we have a roll call vote, sorry.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Consider a motion to authorize the interfund transfer from general fund to emergency management fund. Again, Susan.
Yes, this is a transfer that we do every year. It is something that is identified within our budget process, but we are still required to bring that forward to the commission every year to get that actual transfer to be approved. So therefore, we are asking for your approval to authorize a transfer of $345,531 from the general fund to the emergency management fund. As you will recall, the emergency management fund is funded with some grant dollars from the state, either through funding part of the positions that were in that fund or through the homeland security grant. But the remainder of that fund is funded with county general fund dollars, which is what this request is.
Public comments? Not, I'll go to the commission for questions or action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item number 12 is to consider a motion to authorize the interfund transfers from ARPA funding to general fund, highway fund, and sobriety fund.
Again, this is a transfer request that we have asked for previously, most recently for third quarter salaries. As you may recall, in April of 2022, the commission authorized a salary increase to help with aiding in retention of staff. And as that is an eligible item to use ARPA funds for, we are requesting your approval to transfer dollars from the ARPA fund over to the funds identified, general fund of $378,935, highway fund of $23,675, and 24/7 sobriety fund of $1,113, for a total of $403,723.
Again, any public comment? Commission discussion or motions?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second, a roll call vote?
Bender?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 13 is to consider a request for use of personnel budget savings for operational expenses for the 2024 budget. Again, Susan.
As we get closer to the end of the year, we have three departments that are projected to be over budget in their other expenditure area of the budget. Per policy, for departments to use personnel savings to fund those other expenditures, I have to get commission approval. As of my last review, none of these departments are over yet. They're just anticipating being over by the time we get to closing out 2024 books. So the treasurer's office is requesting $6,200 in personnel savings to help cover the cost of postage and printing. Juvenile detention center is requesting $16,000 in personnel savings to help cover operational expenses primarily in the form of medical services to the juveniles and their care. And additionally, the 24/7 sobriety fund is requesting a supplement of $3,500 from personnel savings related to operational expenses mainly for testing supplies. And memos are included with more details.
Public comment on this item? Commission discussion or a motion?
I'll second with just a brief comment applauding all of our department heads. I think we run a tight ship around here in the fact that these are all fairly minor end-of-year transactions to cover operational budgets with personnel savings. Again, that's using savings from one bucket to help another, and so those are a little bit fungible. But I understand why this policy holds the department heads accountable to come bring that forward. But I just applaud all the department heads, even including these three. I think these are very understandable requests, and so that's just a testament to the leadership we have at the county to run pretty tight to our budgets. So happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Bender?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 14 is to consider a motion to approve the unassigned general fund balance threshold resolution.
This is a resolution that is not, the previous ones that we've been going through are fairly common annual items that we do this time of year. This item is not tied to that. So this is something that internally we've been using as a threshold for the last few years. The, the, within the auditor's office and the commission office, we've been kind of using as far as in our projections, trying to maintain a minimum of a 25% unassigned fund balance in our forecast. The state policy or the state codified law does not have a minimum. It has a maximum for unassigned, but not a minimum. But we all, as part of the FAN committee from a few years ago, there was a recommendation for us to establish a policy and to maintain a three-month reserve, which is essentially a 25%. So this resolution is just brought to you for you to consider formalizing that act. We've, like I said, we've been unformally using that as our guide. And additionally, the second part of this resolution is establishing a process, again formally, that if we want to use unassigned fund balance, or also known as reserves, to help fund budgets going forward, that'll be a specific part of our budget process where you'll have that in detail. Again, we had that as part of our last budget process where we had those conversations. Again, this just formalizes this in a form of a resolution for us to put it in writing.
Thank you. Public comment again? Commission conversation or motion?
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Does this replace or modify any previous formalized policy?
No, we've not had a formal policy in the past. And so we've had conversations with, as part of our rating process a few years ago, where Moody's indicated that if we had ever dipped below 20%, that they would see that as unfavorable that could trigger a downgrade rating change for us in the future. But nothing formal that the commission has taken action on. And so this is just something that, as we've been moving towards that five-year forecast process that FAN recommended, that we've been using that 25% threshold just to, informally.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just make the comment. I think this is, again, just showing how fiscally sound the county is right now. We're in a really good place. I give a lot of the credit to that, to Susan and the FAN and some of the strategic layout. And then also back to my prior comment that all of our department heads are hitting their operational budgets. So that makes it a lot easier to forecast if we have consistent budgeting year to year. But I guess maybe I'd have just the follow-up question. I believe that that top end is 40%, correct? So we, the unstated portion of the state law says the ceiling has to be 40, and now we're setting a soft floor at 25, that we could go below if we need to, but it'll at least bring it to this body and say we have to make a conscious decision to do that and part of some broader plan.
Correct. If we ever projected that we were going to be below 25%, or if we actually went below 25%, that would be a formal process. The auditor's office would come back to the commission to make your body aware of this and then also provide options for you and ideas for you to consider and have you provide direction to us as to how you wanted to proceed. Again, it just formalizes what we've been working through the last few years. It just, there's nothing in law that says we couldn't go below 25%, but this just was to trigger that official communication back to the commission.
And then just one follow-up question, Mr. Chair. I know our fund balances, especially as we collect taxes, is kind of a seasonal thing, you know, April and October, April and November. So we kind of can ebb and flow. This is taking a fixed point in time as of the end of the calendar year to kind of take, to flatten that out and take into account that we're probably going to be well above 25% at times. And then right before we collect a big tranche of property taxes, maybe we dip below that. But the, the measure of this is end of each year?
Correct. How this is written is at the end of this year. When I've asked Department of Legislative Audit, as far as the timing and when this formula, that 40% threshold has to be maintained, their recommendation to me was make sure at your end, you're below that 40%.
So what, what do we expect to be at the end of this year? Just curious.
That'll be into next, the next agenda item.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. Spoiler alert. Thanks, Susan.
Any other comments or questions? I would say in reference to the comments already been made, that we all are aware of 2026 as a big challenge and a hole in our cash flow budget, so to speak. So these numbers look great, but there will be some changes certainly after that. So we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this threshold, general fund threshold resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 15 is to consider a motion to authorize the assignment of unassigned general fund balances for public safety needs. Susan?
Yes, as we've communicated in this last agenda item, that the state codified law 721-18.1 indicates that unassigned general fund balance can exceed 40% of next year's budgeted appropriations. We anticipate being over that at the end of this year, and therefore, we are asking for a motion for an assignment of $15.5 million within the general fund to an assigned function of future public safety needs. As we've expected, we've been preparing for the ARPA dollars to expire, and that will be happening in 2026 where there will be very little ARPA dollars expended. And at this point, I'm not projecting any dollars for operational needs. It'll just be finishing out some construction contracts. And so we've been preparing for that. We've layered in some opt-out early. We've had some favorable trends as far as revenue goes the last few years. And so, but we know as we move forward into '26 and beyond, public safety will be continued to be a focus for our budget. And so therefore, we're asking for that assignment to public, for future public safety needs.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I don't see anyone. Commission discussion or action?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just asked the question. That was my previous question. So assuming we make this assignment, then how will we wrap up this year? What are we on pace for? Obviously, we didn't want to be above 40%. What will this bring us back down to?
I don't actually have the exact percentage, and some of that is estimated as we have not finished December yet, as well as we're still waiting on bank franchise numbers for, that we won't get till early January. That will be for '24. So it, we, based upon our estimates, we should be below that 40%, but it'll be on the higher end of the 30s is what I would estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If none, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote again, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16 is to consider a motion to authorize the director of facilities and construction to sign a purchase agreement and Daken Applied America for the replacement of the rooftop unit at Minnehaw County Annex Building under OMNIA Partners Cooperative Contract R2001. Mr. Krenz?
Morning, Commissioner. Mark Krenz, facilities director. Yeah, so the rooftop unit, Public Defender's Building, is due for replacement because of the aging technology. It does qualify for ARPA funding. I've received a proposal from Diken Applied through OMNI partners contract R2004001, 401, excuse me, that exempts from the public bid process. The proposal amount for the rooftop unit replacement is $193,273. This proposal has been reviewed and approved for legal sufficiency by the state's attorney's office, and I'm requesting commission authorization to sign the proposal between Minnehaw County and Diken Applied for the replacement of the Public Defender rooftop unit. Are there any questions?
Any public comment? If not, questions from the commission? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We don't need a roll call vote on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 17 is to consider a motion to declare a sheriff's office vehicle a surplus for salvage and acceptance as an insurance payment of $19,000. Mr. Bosman, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Doing well. Joe Bosman, Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have a fairly straightforward request. We had one of our sheriff's office vehicles get damaged during an event on November 14th, early morning hours. The damage to the vehicle sustained was so much that it was totaled out per insurance companies. And so they have offered a payout of $20,000 minus our $1,000 deductible. So $19,000 plus, they will cover any of the removal of the equipment that was in it and the installation to go into the next sheriff's office vehicle. So with that, this would surplus the vehicle for the purpose of salvage to an insurance company and accept the refund, or the insurance check of $19,000.
Thank you. Any public comment? Commission discussion, motion? Isn't that the one that was sitting out front when they?
It was the unfortunate target that was parked in front of the admin building, yes.
Thankfully, nobody was in it.
Yes, I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 18 is to consider a motion to reappoint Chris Brockvelt to a second three-year term in the museum board effective January 1, 2025. Bill Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Under the joint cooperative agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County that established the museum, it sets up for four citizens to be appointed by the city, four citizens to be appointed by the county to the museum board. Chris Brockvelt has served one three-year term on the museum board. Chris has quite a history with the museum. He served as the project manager for the construction of the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center, which came in on time and under budget. And he's got interested in the museum. He's about 90% attendance rate. And I would ask respectfully that Chris be reappointed for one more three-year term on the museum board.
Thank you, Bill. Any public comment? Commission discussion?
I would make a motion to approve and to thank Chris for the time that he's spent on the board already, and we look forward to another term.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and this is not a roll call vote either. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. By the way, thank you for the notes. Item 19, consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign a resolution authorizing submission of applications for the 2025 BIG preservation and replacement funds and cost participation at 20% for three bridges. Mr. Mayor?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars Highway. Before you, is a resolution to apply for three big grants, bridge improvement grants. One of them is a bid-ready grant, which we have hired a consultant to go out and do a complete design of the project, do environmental, SHPO core permitting. We applied to the state at that point. The other two projects are preservation projects where we're planning to do polymer chip seals on top of bridge decks in order to seal them up to keep the chlorides out of the bridge decks.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Public comments? Looking for a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Bender, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. So I just was clarifying. So the first one we're doing is, number 19, is the motion to approve the, the Three Bridges project. Is that what we're doing? We're doing these in three different motions. That's what I'm trying to set up.
Yes, there is a, you should be able to, it's a resolution to apply 8024 Three Bridges. I believe it's one resolution for all three.
Okay. And then you have two other resolutions that you're, okay, that's what I was a little confused about. Thank you.
Good question. Any public comment? Commission, action?
I made a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion with just a question. So you have these as projected scores right now?
Yes.
And then, and we have no sense of where the cut line is going to be? Any strategic elements here? Because obviously, you made the choice to go 8020. Any, any insight into the thought process here? Definitely supportive, but just make sure we're thinking about it?
The scores last year were in the low 50s for all of the structures that were awarded. 52, I think, was maybe the lowest one. So that's why, that's why we ended up with these scores. And then I can go a little further and do it on the, on the 7030 grant, the next item.
Okay. No, I think that's sufficient for, for me, for, for this one. So yeah, happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 20 is to consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign, excuse me, a resolution authorizing submission of applications for the BIG preservation and replacement funds and cost participation at 30% for structures. Jacob?
Commission, this grant, we elected to go 7030 on. It is not in our replacement schedule until 2027. If we were able to happen to get the bridge awarded at 7030, we feel that would be reasonable. Going, going any higher at this time wouldn't, wouldn't make financial sense as we have another year or two where we could apply and possibly get a higher score in the interim.
Thank you. Questions for Jacob? Public comment?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Kiple?
Aye.
Blyenberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 21 is to consider a motion to Item 21 is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the South Dakota DOT utility and right-of-way certificates for projects MC 22-03, structure 50-273-90, replacement of MC 24-05, structure 51-49-40, 140, replacement. Jacob?
Yes, so this guarantees to the state that if they were to award us funds, we have these steps taken care of. We've communicated with the utility companies, so they know a project is coming and what impacts they might have, and we have an understanding of what cost potential there could be. And then the right-of-way, the easements have been obtained for these projects as well, so we don't, we don't foresee running into any hurdles there time-wise.
Public comment? Commission, action or motion or questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
22 is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution establishing new fees for overweight, oversized permits.
Our permits that we have, we like to update every three to four years. The last time this was updated was in 2020, I believe. And we are, just wanting to update our fees to stay, stay ahead of inflation.
Thank you. Public comment? Commission discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, roll call vote?
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thank you, Jacob. 23 is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a 2025 sub-recipient agreement with the Southeastern Council of Governments. Meredith?
Good morning, commissioners. Meredith Jerko, Minnehaha County Commission Office. So before you today is the yearly agreement with the Southeastern Council of Governments, or CCOG. This is the Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement. It basically serves as a, a pass-through for federal funds for different highway projects. The grant award is for $90,145. The 2025 Unified Planning Work Program is attached, which describes the projects that are planned. And a lot of those work activities include the need for professional services, consultants, and personnel services. So Jacob is also available to answer any questions that are more specifically related to some of those highway projects, but looking for your approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Any public comment? Commission discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Item 24 is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a 2025 mobile crisis team agreement. Again, Meredith?
Hello, Meredith Jerko, Commission Office. This is our contract with Southeastern Behavioral Health to serve as our provider for our mobile crisis team for 2025. The base fee amount is unchanged from 2024. That is a $5,000 administrative fee that's paid in 12-month installments. And then we are responsible for the cost of on-call-as-needed mental health professionals and any of those other crisis intervention services that are billed to us. So happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Bender?
In my experience, in the last 10 years, this might be the best $5,000 that the county spends. It's a tremendous program, has great outcomes, and we really appreciate the work that Southeast Behavioral Health does with these folks who are at risk. And they are able to keep a tremendously high percentage of these folks at home with their families. So I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Second, we have a second.
I will second.
Yep. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 25 is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a 2025 coroner and medical examiner contract. Meredith?
Meredith Jerko, Commission Office. This is for the 2025 contract with Dr. Kenneth Snell. He currently serves as our coroner and medical examiner for the county. This, the total cost of the contract includes fees for service as the coroner and medical examiner and estimates for normal expenses associated with the work of the office. There is a section in the contract that does state that should those fees be projected to exceed 80% of the total budget, that Dr. Snell and the county would determine if a budget supplement is required. But this contract includes the coroner's salary as well as the medical examiner services fees.
Any public comment? Commission, action or questions?
Could make a statement?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve and also to just comment on how fortunate we are as a county to have such a well-respected professional expert in the field. So Dr. Snell, I think, is a wonderful asset to the county.
Thank you.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. So roll call vote, please.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
We're now for, here for the opportunity for any public comment. Make sure that if you have comments that you sign in and state that you're county of residence. No one moving forward. We'll go into the commission liaison reports. Are there any reports today? Commissioner Bender?
I just note that the, we had a meeting last week, our, our regular meeting for the progress on the Juvenile Justice Center, and the construction continues to be moving forward. You can get a good view of it as you drive by on 229, heading west. We continue to look hard at opportunities to invest the dollars in the, in, in a way that will give us the longest-term return on that money. And, and through that process, we've looked hard at a couple of different options that we've elected not to move forward with, but there are a couple that we're still looking at, including putting concrete on one of the park, parking lots, just because of the longer-term benefit that that provides and that, that we do have those funds available right now. But it's been a great, smooth process so far. Really have good partners and thankful for that.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I've got a couple. I met last week with Jacob, and he was giving me all really good news. There's a project at Colton that they had seven bids on that came in substantially under budget. If you want to ask him particulars, I'm not the operational person. There's also a project that he worked on for Box Culverts, and there were 11 bidders on that one, which came in substantially under budget. And now he's working on a pavement management contract, which also appears that it's going to be in great shape. So that's all good news. Looks like the market has changed a little bit. The other thing is that Commissioner Karski and I attended a metro management meeting that we're both parts of, and there's lots of good news with that. For the first time in a long time, they have a full, I don't know, bucket of potential employees that are going through training, and that's really in great shape. The other thing is, is that it appears the expenses are a little bit under contract, along with the fact that we have some additional revenue coming in underneath the conversations about the phone fees. So right now, their financial position is very positive. So that's all good, especially from a personnel standpoint. That's the first time we've kind of had that information in a long, long time. So that's a very important part of what we do as an organization with the city. Any non-action commission discussion items? I will hopefully get this turned. We're going to go into executive session immediately following for the purpose of SDCL 125-2, 1, 3, 4, and 6. So I'd like a motion to enter into the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We're now going into the exec session in the training room, I believe. Thank you. And we'll be-